Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this to order. Thank you all for attending this budget work session for the Borough of Gettysburg for Monday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. We do have a lot to cover tonight and over the next couple of meetings. We are a small town, but our budget is a mighty document. We have a lot to cover. So some announcements for upcoming meetings that are of interest to the public in this process. Next Monday, the 28th, at 7:00 PM will be our, be a budget work session. Monday, November 4th, will be a budget work session. Both of those meetings are at 7:00 PM. If needed, we will have another work session. Previously, that had been scheduled for November 5th, but it was pointed out that was election night, so we're going to have to pick a different date for that if needed. Tuesday, November 12th, will be the regular business meeting for the Borough Council where we would vote to advertise a budget. November 20th, the draft 2025 budget would be posted for public review. And on Monday, December 9th, at our usual business meeting for the month, we would vote to adopt a budget for 2025. Some other announcements for everybody's benefit. The Borough newsletters have been mailed. Please let the Borough staff know if you did not receive one. Electronic copies are available on the website. Tomorrow is the Borough's annual Halloween parade. Road closures in and around downtown and the square will begin around 4:00 PM. We do have a rain date set for Wednesday, though my telephone device tells me that the weather is going to be absolutely gorgeous tomorrow, so hopefully we won't need that. Last week, we announced at the behest of the mayor that the trick or treat will be observed on the 31st at 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And lastly, an executive session of the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg, was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the October 15th, 2024 monthly business meeting of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. That takes us to our public comment section for the evening. I only see two folks in the gallery. Are you, either of you planning to speak today? Okay, we're going to move on then. If the public does attend later, we will have another section at the end of the meeting. So that takes us right into the 2025 budget process. I want to really kind of spell out a little bit of what's going to happen here over the next few meetings for the benefit of the public, as well as for our newer members who have not been through this process that can be somewhat arduous. We're going to go through, you know, just shy of 200 pages of budget documents here over the next several meetings. It can be a lot of information. I just want to sort of highlight for everyone's benefit. It will seem like we are moving past a lot of things without specifically discussing them. There's really less than 10% of this budget that we have direct control over. Much of our budget is expenses that are mandated or preordained. So we have state obligations, federal obligations, contractual obligations, contracts, things that we as a council have approved in previous years that we are currently living with. The only things that we are going to have direct control over here as we get over this stuff, as we go over this stuff, is going to be discretionary spending. So that's going to include capital expenses and, to a certain extent, our staffing levels. We can determine how many people we employ, but we can't always, for much of our staff, we can't play with those rates at all. Many of our employees are covered under a collective bargaining agreement, so those pay rates have been set and agreed to by all parties involved. So that's not a place that we have the freedom to adjust what we're going to do for next year. Where we do have some control is how many employees we're going to have in each, each position in each department. And we do have some discretion when it comes to expenses as it pertains to our professional staff who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. But then there are other things that, for example, we'll talk about how the benefits that we pay our employees are a big driver of costs, especially this year, where we're seeing essentially a 20% increase in health insurance. I don't personally consider those expenses to be something that we have too much leeway with. We provide our employees competitive pay rates and excellent benefits because they do hard jobs. And we employ good people. And the way we keep them is by making sure that their needs are met, especially when it comes to their medical care, their retirements, dental vision, et cetera. So if it seems like we're skipping over some things, please, and you have questions, feel free to stop the process at any point. These are workshops. These are not going to be structured like a business meeting, so these are discussions. If you want more information, feel free to chime in at any point. We have professional staff in this room who know these documents back and forth because they created them. And you also have your fellow colleagues on council who've been through this over and over and over again. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Manager Gable, and we're going to start taking this thing apart piece by piece. The only way to eat the elephant is one bite at a time.
I hear elephant tastes really good.
Find out.
I'd like to start with the fee resolution, largely because what happens in the fee resolution will help determine the revenue generated, which will ultimately go to the general fund and balancing our general fund. And just for those at home, the general fund is the, the operating fund of the borough. And by law, it needs to be balanced where revenues match expenditures. Other funds can run surpluses or deficits, but the general fund must be balanced by law. I know that council already reviewed the fee resolution at a prior workshop. And so what I did is I got those notes. I was not at that meeting, but I received the notes from staff, and I incorporated those into a red line version. So I'd just like to, once again, go through this, make sure everything is where council would like it to be. I added a couple of things that might not have been discussed. Well, I'll point those out as we go through this. I don't know if Chief Glenny would like to add something at the end. So let's go through this, and then we'll, we'll turn it over to Chief. First page, I don't, I don't have any feedback. Reference to Code Enforcement Appeals Board ordinance, fees, or rental occupancy. Same with land use, fence permits, sign ordinance, and the Uniform Construction Code. Uniform Construction Code, incidentally, is largely determined by our third-party contractor, Pennsylvania Municipal Code Alliance. They have a set fee schedule, which is incorporated as an exhibit to our fee resolution. Non-uniform, no changes there. Subdivisional land management, no changes there. Zoning ordinance, there were no changes there. No changes as it relates to fireworks or the set fees for our three parade routes. So just to recap those for folks that want to do special events that are a parade. The law, the short route is $4,955. That's a set fee for all Borough services incorporated into that. Parade Route B is the medium parade route. This is the traditional Memorial Day parade, $2,980. And the Remembrance Day parade route is C, the long route, at $5,570.
I just want to clarify, it's not that all Borough expenses are included in those. There is a prescribed set of services that are included in those. And sometimes the organizers will request other services on top, and so they may receive a bill that is higher than what is prescribed here.
Fair point. And actually, there's an example of that that's going to happen tomorrow.
For sure.
So the prescribed route fee for the parade for tomorrow would be $3,180. But the, the event sponsor would like to do a street, a street dance prior to the parade. That comes at an additional cost to the event sponsor. So that's an excellent point. No changes to our amusement ordinance, junk dealers, transient retail, same, same fee. And now here is where we get into the first edits as it relates to horse-drawn carriages. And I'll turn this over to Becca Fissell, who can maybe talk a little bit more about how we're incorporating parking for these. But these are, these are fairly sizable increases for six passengers, $950 for a year, and six pa, or more than six passengers is $1,025. Then Becca, would you like to talk about how that includes the parking rates?
So previous years, it's gone back and forth. It was in part of this ordinance, then it went to parking, then it has gone back now. And so that the horse carriages cannot bag their meters anymore. So that is what you had voted on, to make a horse carriage parking space only. So those spaces have been installed down on Baltimore Street, and they will be parking there. Parking is not getting any revenue for that, and we did take that away. So this was added to the fee ordinance for the carriages.
Any questions on that? Everybody comfortable with those numbers?
At the, at the end, it's, this is roughly what the, those event amenity providers, the horse carriages, would, would have paid with their, their permit and parking. It's, it's, for them, it's essentially a wash. No changes to outdoor dining, no changes to the parking fee structures, with the exception of, I got a note that council would like to add a quarterly permit for LPP users. And I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to do that at the $35 a month, or as I have this drafted in a redlined, you get a small discount for purchasing three months at a time.
Yeah, we did discuss that while you were away. And my recollection, and everybody feel free to jump in, was that we were okay with the little discount there because it's saving us processing expenses, it's saving the customer processing expenses, and it's, it's sort of making the usage of this even more attractive to the folks who need it for employment or for residential purposes. I think everybody was okay with that.
Okay. We're good with 97.50. It's essentially saving 250 a month.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Mobile pay by app. Yes. Becca, do you want to take lead on this?
Sure, I can. Currently, so we had previously, and I don't know if you have any other records, but it might just be easier to explain it. But, so we had previously been paying 14 cents per transaction with pay by phone. And last year, they had raised their fees, and we now pay 30 cents. We do get a cost share of that, so it evens out to that we're pretty much paying 20 cents. So if you take a dollar meter, just say a dollar an hour meter, we're actually receiving 80 cents on that meter. If, you know, if you take all the fees, the consumer is also charged a 35 cent convenience fee. So if you add the 35 cents that they're paying, the 20 cents we're paying, and you don't want the consumer to pay any of the fees, then we would be paying 50 cents per dollar. So we would only be receiving 45 cents per dollar meter.
So the question is, does council want to incur all those increased fees as a cost of doing business, which would decrease our revenue as it relates to those parking fees? Or do we want to continue the cost share between the end user and what the borough is paying?
So I believe we had asked for some projections as to what the differences would look like.
Do you have those handy?
I do not. I sent them to you.
Yeah, I don't have them in the meeting folder. Remember where you sent them? All right, we'll get back to that.
Okay. Yeah, I think we wanted to see, you know, how much we're talking about paying out over the course of a year, so that we could try to make a informed decision as to how much of this we need to pass on to the consumer.
There was a typo in H. So these are construction vehicles. These are per week as opposed to the days.
Okay.
The last meeting, I made a note that our, whenever we put a project out for bid, those costs tend to be coming back anywhere between 30 or 20 to 40% over budgeted estimates for a construction project. So this is the degradation fees that we're currently charging. I'm proposing a very modest increase for folks that dig into our streets after we paved them, going up 50 cents per square yard.
Sure.
And then as you get into the older streets that have older surfaces, they stay. So five years and, and longer, they stay at the 2024 rates. Then I got a note.
Hold on one second. It says, everybody understanding what he's talking about there? This is the, the permitting fee for cutting into pavement. You know, if you need to replace your gas line or your water line or something like that, the permit costs different depending on how old the asphalt is. If it's brand new, it's going to cost you the most. If it's 15 years old, it's going to be the cheapest.
Couple of the miscellaneous fees, fee copy for zoning ordinance, maps, subdivision land development ordinance, those types of services we used to provide seem to be outdated. So you had asked that they just be removed.
Yes.
So that's represented here as well.
Yes, we had, we had discussed how much of that's available through the website or through eCode. And there's just no reason to be charging like that anymore.
And lastly, I am suggesting we increase our service fee for fuel facilities fee of, from 18 to 19 cents per gallon. So this will be above the, the market rate that we, we provide our folks at the fire department, our, our own police, well, we don't pay ourselves, but they use that facility there, as does, I think, the Adams County Library System.
Is there any reason not to do that, Robbie?
GMA does as well.
Is there any reason not to increase that, Robbie? And there's a typo on line 24, too.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Sorry.
I didn't hear you.
I said no.
Okay.
Okay. So those are the, that's the red line version. We'll, we'll get back to the cost share with pay by phone. But in the interim, let's turn it over to Chief Glenny.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. Back during the, the original meeting, and the date escapes me when we had that workshop meeting, we had talked briefly about how we were billing out for an Act 22 of 2017 request, which is basically the right to know for police recordings. And we're currently doing it off of the labor burden rate for however many actual hours we have into it. And then adding the, the cost for the recording media, whether that be a thumb drive or, or a DVD, CD, whatever it may be. Because based on, on CGS regulations and other things like that, we, we don't email video. There's just too many, too many ways to intercept that. And it's just easier to put it down on media and, and pick it up that way. So I had asked council if you wanted to incorporate that in the fee resolution, or if we just wanted to continue billing it out at the labor burden like we do, let's say, in escort. So I did a little digging. As, as a member of the PA Chiefs Association, I have access to a message board that I can ask. So I, I shot a message to the message board asking other chiefs around the state, how do you handle this? And, and got a significant amount of, of feedback back and found out that we were, feedback backs, I'm stuttering there, sorry. Found out we, you know, we, we were way undercharging compared to what a lot of the other places are doing. And I went through and I, I did, did summarize some of the things here that, that I can go over with you. But there's a, just as an example here, if I can find my reading assistance here. So there's some departments, and there was a wide range of things that were being done. One department in Luzerne County, $175 per camera view plus recorded media. So when it, when they say it that way, per camera view, let's say that we have a traffic stop where somebody is sighted, and somebody asks for that, that video under Act 22 of 2017, and we didn't have a backup officer go. It's the simplest way to do it. So when I say per camera view, that would mean that the officer that stopped the car would have her body camera. And then we would also have in-car video camera. So that would be two camera views. So in this particular case, that, that two camera views would, would cost that requester $350. The, one, one department here at Adams County, one department in York County, and one department down in Montgomery County require what they call $125 filing fee. And then they charge $200 for the first hour, $150 for the second hour, and then $200 for each additional hour. So of, of work on the video. So you could see how that could build up if, if there was a, and the reason some of these become pricey, I should explain, is often is oftentimes when they request video, it involves redaction. And redaction is a slow tedious process, no matter what video you're doing. Because you've got to go in and there's sort of some automatic redacting tools in our video things. But then you've got to go in and check them. And oftentimes, you have to go frame by frame by frame to remove, remove a face or, you know, it's usually a face. So they can get rather expensive. Then we have, there's another municipality in York County that charges a flat one hundred dollars per camera view or per video. Then we have a hundred and twenty-five dollars per camera view, a lot of different combinations of all these things throughout. And my recommendation would be to council, if they wanted to change it and include it, is that, you know, we go somewhere in the middle. I think that we should, if we're going to change it, we should maybe say, let's require a hundred dollar deposit or filing fee and then do a hundred dollars per camera view. So if there's one camera view and you did a hundred dollar deposit, once we were done with that, that's all you know. If there are two camera views, you would have an additional hundred. And that would be the simplest. I think that the pros for changing it that direction is we would be a lot better equipped to tell somebody that's making that video request, well, okay, we know that there's going to be four camera views to this because it was a traffic stop and there was a backup officer come. So we're going to have two car videos and two body camera videos. So this video is most likely going to cost you four hundred dollars. Or as to where before, we would be, it would be a complete estimate as because we don't know until we review it how long it's going to take to, number one, review it. Number two, how long it's going to take to redact it. And so, you know, oftentimes, the estimates don't end up being what the charge was for.
Okay, can I ask some questions here?
Yeah, certainly.
So I'm sorry, which act are we talking about, Act?
This is Act Twenty-two of two thousand, or twenty-seventeen. It's similar to, it's basically the right to know act for police video.
Sure. Since its enactment, do you have data as to how much we're spending annually? How much, how many payroll hours we are spending doing this?
So we've only had four or five. One of them was super simple and costs fifty dollars. Another one was more involved and it was a couple hundred dollars. So I don't have that exact figure, no. We don't get these often. But when we do, as I said, we've been charging it. And there has, there's only been, you know, a handful of them to this point.
Sure.
And unlike the right to know act, where we basically can't charge for things that Act Twenty-two of seventeen allows for the charging list because I think they did realize there was going to have to be some redaction and things like that.
Yeah, no, it can be significantly more labor.
I mean, it's.
I would suggest that this is something we should continue to track. We should try to get a sense of, if we're being reimbursed for the labor hours currently, if that's what we're charging, and this is something we're doing a couple times a year, that seems pretty reasonable. I mean, if you were, you know, pulled over for a traffic stop and, you know, maybe for a reason or cause, or maybe not, other officers arrive and you now need, you know, two body cams, two dash cams, you know, backseat cam, whatever, that cost gets, could add up pretty quickly and could become cost prohibitive to somebody getting the data they're looking for. So I would suggest, and I'm hoping to whatever anybody else is suggesting here, that this is something we monitor and maybe address if it becomes more prudent to do that in the future.
Certainly. And I will say that we get, we get, I won't say many requests, but we do get a number of requests. But oftentimes, those requests are either denied because they're a criminal prosecution or I will refer to people and like, look, if it's, if somebody's arrested for a misdemeanor, then they have the right to get this through the discovery process, which is outside Act Twenty-two, which means they don't going to get charged anyway. They just get it from the district attorney's office. So this is just for usually folks that are outside that process somehow. I am completely okay with whatever you want to do. It's just I'm looking at the fee schedule.
Sure, sure. No, this is the right place for it. I would be curious to watch it over time, though. I mean, I can see how in a larger municipality, this could be a major suck of resources. And if we get there, I think it's something we should address.
Okay.
Anybody else have thoughts?
Seems reasonable.
Anybody? Okay. Thank you for bringing it up. And again, when it becomes an issue, we'll address it again.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Circling back to the projected depletion of expected revenue. Becca prepared this, so I'm going to turn it over to her to explain what we're looking at.
So I had just used the twenty-twenty-three numbers because they were complete from January to December. So. So in twenty-twenty-three, it was costing the borough twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars in fees that we were paying to pay by phone. If those fees were the same, I mean, if the fees that we're paying in twenty-twenty-four with the same transactions in twenty-twenty-three, it would be, we're paying forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a hit.
Why were those, why was it increased by twelve thousand? Explain.
Pay by phone raised their fees.
Just because the rates went up?
Because they weren't getting, they weren't getting enough.
As you said earlier, yeah. Yeah, okay. That is a big bite.
Yeah, when we, we met with one of the companies when they were showing us the kiosks, we, they had, I think, a pretty nice candid conversation about their industry and how there's multiple companies that offer this service. And the average life expectancy on them is about two and a half years. And they either shutter or they get swallowed by another company. And they all seem to have pretty favorable introductory rates for the first couple of years while you're, you know, unscrewing all your meter heads and throwing them in the dumpster. And then all of a sudden, you don't really have very many options. And their costs are, you know, driven by the same pressures as anybody else's, right? They have a professional staff. They have payroll. They have health insurance that's going up twenty percent a year. So their costs do increase. But also, it is a free market where they're allowed to set those rates. And so if they decide they want to make a higher profit this year, they're going to do that. And our choices are to either swallow the cost, pass it on to the consumer, or try to find another vendor who will probably be, you know, watching competitors' rates and setting theirs, you know, fairly commensurately. So do you have a suggestion for what you would see us do with the fees this year?
I mean, we were paying, I would not leave, I mean, if you're wanting the consumer to pay the thirty-five cents that they've been paying, it would be the same. The, it's if you want them to pay the additional or if we are going to eat the additional as we have this past year.
And what is the addition per transaction?
That is the, it's six cents. Because we were paying sixteen, or we were paying fourteen cents.
So on any given transaction, we are paying how much and the consumer is paying how much?
We are paying twenty cents. They are paying thirty-five cents.
Okay. And so there's a six cent increase.
From the year before.
So we can either pay twenty-six cents or we can charge the customer forty-one cents.
No, the increase is the twenty cents. We were current, we were paying fourteen cents. So that six cents is the twenty cents that we're now paying.
Okay.
So we're already paying that. In other words, that's.
We are already paying that, correct. They haven't raised them again. The question was, do we keep paying twenty cents and the consumers thirty-five cents?
I think we could split the difference.
I have questions.
Yeah.
Can you, Becca, can you estimate? Because I don't know the answer. Can you estimate how many meters in the borough do not take coins? An estimate?
One hundred.
Out of how many are on the?
Six hundred and thirty that do take coin.
So I'm in favor of passing on fees like this as much as possible so that we can get our bottom line on what we want for parking income. Credit card fees, restaurants are doing it. Theaters are doing it. I don't know a business that's not doing it. I mean, it's a, it's a pain. As a consumer, I get it. I mean, but it's, name an industry that takes credit card payment that doesn't pass off the majority, if not all, the fees. I know it's hard for the consumer, but that's the convenience of just, here you go. Here's my, you know, here's my number, here's my card number. Do you want ten more minutes? Yes. Or carry around a bunch of coins. I don't like it as a consumer, but I'm looking at the, what we need to generate on parking revenue. As we all know, that's a, how many types of revenue do we have? Are we allowed for the Commonwealth of Borough code? You know, we've got property tax. We've got parking. And then we got fee structures like these little things.
So this, just for context, this is a difference of, it looks like eighteen thousand dollars a year out of approximately one point four million.
I'm just, I'm just not in favor of us, of the borough, absorbing more fees than we're already paying.
Yeah.
So and if you take it in the, like, if you're looking at it dollar-wise, like I said, currently, we're getting eighty cents for the dollar. If you transfer that fifty-five cents completely to the consumer, we would be receiving a dollar for a dollar meter.
Right.
That's what I'm wanting.
I'm in agreement with Chad, I think.
Anybody else? Okay. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding at the concept of passing that on to the consumer. Just for the sake of argument, how does everybody feel about those meters? They're enforced spaces that are app-only. They don't have the choice of paying a coin meter. So.
I don't guess we can do a, I don't know, can that system work that way? Where are these certain meters that are not taking coin?
I am not sure. I will have to check on that. When I, when people call me and say that, the only place that does have the app only currently is the third blocks of West Broadway and West Lincoln. And then I just direct them to the second block of West Lincoln, where there are meters.
Okay. Well, if everybody's comfortable with the adjustment that staff is recommending, then that's what we'll do. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a fee resolution.
Thank you for putting all that together, Becca.
Okay, moving on. Member Carr asked our public works director to discuss a little bit about the need and uses of various equipment. So Rob, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, I sent out.
Can you pass the microphone down, please?
I did send out the needs and uses for the proposed dump truck. I hope everybody got them and got a chance to take a look at them.
Yep.
Are there any questions on those?
Thank you for providing that. As I, the reason why I requested it was because I assumed that it was a list like this and a very important need for the borough. Can you remind us again, the current dump truck that we have and how old it is?
So it's a nineteen ninety-nine international single axle dump truck. And this new one, we're replacing that, which is twenty-five years old.
Do you know how much it would cost, too, if we tried to repair it?
Half of what it's worth.
You said the frame was rusted?
It's rusting out, yes. It's a split frame and it's rusting, starting to separate, which is basically going to have to probably frame the whole truck.
So that's a whole new chassis?
It'll be, it'll be removing the cab and the motor and the axles and stripping out the axle, old axle off and putting a new axle in, which is going to be roughly half the cost of what the truck is worth now. Probably, it's going to probably be about thirteen thousand dollars.
You'd be able to get antique plates for it, though, Robbie.
I would.
Yeah, but then it's limited by how many miles you can drive it every year.
Right.
Just for the sake of argument, if you, if we went that route, how long, how much life would the truck have in it after that?
This new one or the one we repaired?
If you repaired it for thirteen?
Depending on the motor and the body, the bed, maybe another ten years.
I'm going to guess that in ten years, the cost of this truck is going to be more than the thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, the power, the power plant, the motor, it's showing some wear, too, but we haven't got to the point where we have to do a major rebuild. Major rebuild is going to be about twenty-five thousand.
Right.
So putting that off to the side for a minute, Robbie, you want to talk about the lease-to-own option?
Okay. So I'm assuming you all got a chance to look at the paper that I put in front of you last Monday?
Yes.
So the lease-to-own would be five annual payments. First payment would be right up front at fifty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. And that was the, that is, that is a five point nine five percent rate. And since the optional payment of upfront payment, it decreased the payment, optional payment from fifty, down from sixty thousand nine hundred and three dollars and forty-one cents down to fifty-seven three ninety-three seventy-nine. In other words, if we wait till a year to make a payment in October twenty-five, the five annual payments would be sixty thousand. Whereas if we pay a payment upfront, it's fifty-seven thousand for five years. And then after that five years, for a dollar, the truck is the borough's.
Right.
We bought the Baco in a similar fashion a few years ago. Over the course of five years, we made an equal payment each of those five years.
I think this is a prudent move for a couple of different reasons. First of all, over the last couple of years, post-pandemic, we have watched the cost of these vehicles go up exponentially every year. This truck costing this much now, I mean, that price for twenty-twenty-five is not guaranteed. It could go up, who knows how much? I mean, the cost of the steel, the cost of the rubber. Every aspect of building a vehicle like this has been going up steadily post-pandemic. We're not going to get a price like this again. But further, given the variety of activities we use this vehicle for, like snow removal during a blizzard, we really can't be caught with our pants down with a broken truck. There are life safety considerations. We need to have the equipment operational on demand. That would be my argument for going ahead with this capital expense.
I had a question. Do we ever lease the heavy equipment out to other municipalities, Robbie?
So I answered that question on Monday night. Through the agility program, we don't, we don't rent. We just, we just share services.
Right.
So our dump trucks are actually going out to the townships on working on agility projects. Plus, their dump trucks are coming in and working on ours. So we don't, we don't transaction money back and forth.
And that list is pretty comprehensive that you put together.
It is.
It's used.
It is. Yeah. And unfortunately, if we don't replace it, that's going to hurt our availability of resources to transfer where we can't get, maybe get that transfer back to help us.
Thank you.
So we will need a decision on this tonight only because if we're going to get locked in on the fifty-seven thousand dollar rate, we will need to make a payment this year, which we have not budgeted for twenty-twenty-four. And so a motion would need to appear on your November agenda authorizing that expenditure to get this locked in at the lower preferred rate for the next five years.
And we would be reallocating those funds from capital reserves?
Correct.
Yeah.
And can I add something there? Like Matt said, that within thirty days, that quote could change.
Yeah.
So.
I'm in favor of locking in this as soon as possible.
I was going to suggest the same thing. I can't imagine that interest rate getting any better.
Does this better feel? Yes?
Or would you be there? Or would you be very opposed to the repair option?
I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I just don't think it's gonna be worth our benefit to do that. I really don't.
Okay.
Patty?
I agree.
Okay. So I think we are gonna move ahead with that, and we'll get that on the November agenda, please. Thank you, everybody.
Another piece of equipment, this is a cost share with GMA. Or, I'm not GMA, GBSWA. The, the ditch witch. It's a small skid loader. Robbie, you wanna explain why we need that? And then I can talk about the money.
Excuse me. So, the Stormwater Authority has been asking me to clean Stevens Run pretty much every year in different areas throughout the, the run. And there's a lot of places that we can get in with our skid loader and maybe our Baco, but there's a lot of places that we cannot get in with our skid loader and our Baco. So, we rent this walk-behind compact loader, skid loader. It's basically a mini skid loader that you'll walk behind to get in, like where the bike bridge is, 'cause we can't, skid loader won't go underneath the bridge. East Middle Street down to Springs Avenue, we can't get the skid loader in there because it can't go under the bridge. Washington Street from, from, all the way down to Carlisle Street underneath the hotel, we can't get the skid loader in there. So, we rent this, and, and I went to the Stormwater Authority because there's a lot of problems with renting versus our schedule when we wanna do it, 'cause a lot of times that, that, if we have time during the week, we'll go out there and just on the whim and go work out in one area to clean it out, which means we can't get this, we can't rent the skid loader as fast as we want to, 'cause it might be rented out to somebody else. So I approached the Stormwater Authority about buying one, and they talked about the cost sharing with the borough. I think it's, was it 75%, 25% Charles, that's the way it broke down?
Two-thirds, one-third.
Yeah, two-thirds, one-third. So, they were in agreeance with it. And I'm, I'm looking to be agreeance with, with the council.
Yeah, so the Stormwater Authority did approve this as, to include in their 2025 budget. They'll, they'll take care of $26,834 in our draft budget over in Fund 18, which we'll get to eventually. I have currently $13,417 sitting in there as the cost share for the Gettysburg Borough.
So, our, our portion would be, we would probably most likely use that in the winter for sidewalks down at the square, parking lots, things like that, small places that we need to get into. But during the summer, we probably won't have a need for that. Stormwater will have a need during the summer months and the spring and fall months.
So I'm looking at pictures online. It looks like you can change out the tool on it for different-
We can. Now, now it's a smaller unit, so all of our implements that fit on our regular skid loader may not necessarily work on that smaller skid loader, because it's not heavy enough, and it may not have the hydraulic flow that, that, like, say, like the milling head that we use. The broom it could use, the snow blower, it probably won't be able to use, 'cause it's a six-foot wide snow blower, so we wouldn't be able, we'd have to keep using that on our skid loader. The forks, pellet forks, we could use on that, 'cause it has a, it has a thousand-pound lift capacity on that, where our skid loader has, like, 2,000-pound lift capacity.
So you could use it like as a forklift, a small forklift, things like that?
We could.
So, this is Stevenson, I think, is the invoice would be, would be Stevenson is where you're thinking of purchasing it?
Well, I, that's where I went to get, I actually got three different quotes from Bobcat, from Stevenson Equipment, and from Vermeer.
And the dump truck, where is that coming from?
That's a Western Star chassis, and that'll be a, a J&amp;J body built, but it'll be through Stevenson Equipment.
Okay. And the fact that we'd be buying multiple pieces, possibly multiple pieces of equipment, is there any discount for that at all, or?
Well, I already ran down that road, so I got what I got. I tried.
Okay. Would you consider going, like, to Maryland for the, the ditch witch, or no?
The only problem with going to Maryland, and we ran into this issue, is where they, they wanna charge us tax for it, and we don't pay tax.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we're looking-
And, and this would be actually, this would be, this is a Co-Stars dealer.
Okay.
Okay. Maryland is not Co-Stars.
Okay. Understood.
So we're looking at a $13,400 expense with the Stormwater Authority picking up almost $27,000 of this expense. Strong feeling is either way.
Do you know how much we're paying in rental fees annually?
Well, we just started this year.
Okay.
But we're looking probably at, at rental fees roughly $10,000. But here again, it's not always accessible when we need it.
Right.
That's the problem.
And year over year, that would add a lot? That'd be a lot more expensive to keep doing?
Yeah, and heavy, heavier snow years, the use would go up as well.
Right.
Anybody?
I was just wondering how quickly the dump truck would be assembled and shipped.
Well, that, that's, that's why I wanted to get the ball rolling, 'cause it could be two years out.
Yeah.
It used to be three years out. It has, it has shrunk a little bit, but it could be up to two years out.
Is the other one gonna last two years?
I hope.
Yeah, right.
That's the problem. That's why I wanna get something on the books and get started to replace it now. I'm not saying it'll be two years, but it could be up to two years. I mean, we might have it next year, at the end of next year. It, it just all depends on the, the supply chain and how backed up their, the, the bed manufacturer is when they're orders. We had a tough time getting a build slot for a chassis. But we got it.
I don't have any problem with the ditch witch. I appreciate that we have partners like the Stormwater Authority that we can partner with anytime we can.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Strong feelings? Good for you. Okay.
All right.
Let's move ahead with that. Thank you for bringing both of those to our attention.
Thank you. Let's move to talk about structural deficit. Mr. Hurt at Public Comment at our last meeting asked a question about, you know, what is the structural deficit and, you know, how did we end up with it? If you're gonna create a definition of structural deficit, it's, it's fairly straightforward. It's year over year, your expenditures outpace your revenues. So why does that happen? It's been something that the, the borough has struggled with for decades as it relates to our general obligation debt. 19.9% healthcare premium increase for 2025. Obviously, that was not anticipated a year ago. We, we were privileged to be in the four to eight percent increases in those premiums, but like many other organizations, this was our year to, to pay the reaper, if you will. The good news is on the margins, the borough has done a fairly decent job, if not a good job, at increasing our revenue margins to basically keep pace with things like the healthcare premium. So, for example, even though we're gonna experience about $112,000 increase in our healthcare premiums for next year, that's going to be offset by the policy decision that council made last year by changing the overnight parking rate in the garage from $12 to $18. So those are the types of things that the borough can do to keep pace with those inflationary pressures that also contribute to the structural deficit. However, it's not possible to keep pace with your debt service. Debt service is in the neighborhood of about $620,000 every year, and that will continue until the amortization schedule comes down to zero, and that's what I have displayed on the screen right now. So our debt service for 2025 is going to be $637,984, give or take a couple bucks here or there. And that's the piece that the council has never really identified, not just this council, but councils decades ago, has not identified on a good way to handle that structural deficit as it relates to debt service. So I hope that helps Mr. Hurt and the folks watching us on television about the challenges that the borough has always dealt with as it relates to how to pay its debt obligations. Other councils would balance these budgets by cutting things like roadwork, alleywork. Those are the, the big numbers that add up over time. Because we've been privileged to have ARPA funds over the last couple of years, the structural deficit has been masked because we have not really lowered the tax rate, but we've been using those recovery funds from COVID, essentially creating surpluses every year, which then gets put over into capital projects for these larger construction-type projects. So the budget that we're gonna talk about moving forward over tonight and the next couple of meetings, while we do have some ARPA money left over that we can use, I, I would like us to have that conversation as if it weren't there so that we can begin to prepare for '26 and '27, when we absolutely will not have those funds available for us to use. Any questions on structural deficit?
Charles, is there an item in this budget this year that's similar to the offset with the overnight parking? Is there something in there that could raise $100,000 before we start talking about the, all the specifics?
Yes. But do you really wanna go down that road? Honestly, the only thing I could think about, aside from tax increases, is tinkering with your hourly rates for parking. Right now, this draft in front of you keeps all of those hourly rate status quo. But you can see the, the power in that, you know, the, the decision to go to $18 for an overnight, for a 24-hour period is generating additional $100,000, which offsets the wallop in our healthcare premiums.
When did we, when did we go there with the 18?
Currently, that, that was a decision that was implemented in 2024.
Thank you.
Yeah. In fact, I can show you that-
First of the year, right?
What's that?
First of the year, I believe.
Yeah, correct. So, here's a graph of our parking revenues year-to-date. You can see the orange block takes us through August. You can see we are considerably outpacing where we were at a similar time last year. And that's, that's largely due to that, that decision to increase to $18, $6 per day. So, to, to Member Berger's question, aside from parking revenue or taxes, I, I'm not quite sure where we're going to come up with substantial revenues aside from the tinkering on, on the fee resolution here and there.
Right. And I just wanna really stress, too, that as we go through this thing page by page, I, I mean, there is a micro-managing strategy where we could look at, you know, how much did we budget for pens in each department and try to trim, you know, 50 bucks here and 50 bucks out of there, whatever? That's not gonna get us to $976,000. We need to look at, we need to look at the big picture here. This is not about, you know, telling everybody, you know, be more efficient with your copy paper or whatever, right? This is about, we have some massive expenses and those costs have been kicked down the road for a couple of years, and they're coming due. And that's what we have to address here.
While we're on that, Member Bale sent me in an email earlier or later, well, late part of last week, asking, you know, talking about grant funding, which we are always vigorously applying for grants and looking for more grants. I'd just like to remind everyone at home that grant, grant money is a two-edged sword. You can get large sums of money, but it's really hard pressed to find a grant for operational costs. So whenever we apply for a grant, more likely than not, those grants are not going to be found in Fund One. They'll be found over in Fund Eighteen. There are some, like, you know, the Department of Justice has grant opportunities for staffing of police officers, but those are not in perpetuity. Usually, they'll fund for like four years, and then the municipality is stuck hanging onto that salary and finding a way to pay for it in perpetuity beyond those four years. So, it helps, but not a great deal. So, you know, whenever we're talking about six-figure, seven-figure grants, most of those will be for construction costs of some big project over in a capital expenditure somewhere. It's very difficult to find operational money in a, in a grant.
Not only that, but I think it's very, it's not very wise to budget it, budget for it, because you never know if you're gonna get it or not.
Right.
So, speaking from the nonprofit world, it's, it's extremely difficult to, you don't wanna bank on getting X number of dollars in grants, 'cause you might not get any. And then you're stuck with, well, crap. That's how we balanced the budget, because we thought we were gonna get all this grant money. And it's, it's, it's not, it's not possible. Very hard for operational. Easier for things like capital expenses, construction and capital improvement plans, but still never a guarantee. I did like Mr. Berger's thought there of what, what, is there something, though, that we could? And I, and I under, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Moon, about we can't nitpick here and there, because it's not gonna raise that. But I would, but I, I, I do like that we did that last year with the overnight parking. It might be a little too early to do it again, but passing something like that off to the tourists and not the locals, not that the locals aren't parking overnight, they maybe, maybe they are. I'm sure that there's some residential that are having a parking pass at the parking garage. But passing things off to, to tourists to, to help our, you know, because we all know where, this town is slammed with a whole lot of tourists, and this town also has a small public works department, a small police department, for the amount of tourists that we get on our roads and our sidewalks. And this town has a heck of a lot of non-taxable property. So anything we can, like that overnight parking, passed off to the tourists would be great. Is there anything else that we're not seeing?
Have we looked at refinancing the debt?
We did that when we took it in 2016. We're not gonna get a, that debt service happened during Brexit, and if you remember, all the stars aligned then, and essentially, that was free money. I mean, our interest rates on that are basement compared to where, where current rates are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Carr mentioned the nonprofits, and I would say, in the past, some of the large nonprofits have helped the police department in terms of vehicles. The hospital, I think. The college has typically helped the fire department with pieces of equipment, and when they were building the fire station, which was years ago now, but the multipurpose room, because the college has students who volunteer, and so it was a good place for them to study if they were pulling it overnight. And I think it was the hospital recently that, in the last couple of years, that purchased or helped purchase a, a police cruiser, I think.
That would free them to be able to purchase a cruiser since, I wanna say that was 2016?
But it, it's typically been through the police department, not with, with Public Works. So...
Member Berger, you know, ripped, ripped the gab open, I guess, on parking rates. Member Berger, you know, ripped ripped the gab open, I guess, on parking rates. It's been a while since we we played with that. And now that we, in fact, the those rates for the hourly rate on on-street parking have not changed in seven years, seven years. And now, and that predates LPP. So now council has a program in place to protect the locals as it relates to parking. So do we want to entertain something along the lines of adjusting the hourly rate for our twelve-hour meters? Currently, a dollar.
Dollar an hour for the twelve-hour meters.
Yeah. Knowing that we have the ability to protect the locals now with our LPP program.
That local permit?
Yep.
Are we able to see rates of like places around us and what they charge?
So.
Harrisburg is significantly higher than we are, for example, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, that's going to be, ultimately, it it's not going to provide us a lot of context, right? It's like you can go to Hanover and I think you can get like two hours for a quarter. But Hanover has a much, much huger tax base than we do. Like thousands of pet, more taxpayers than we do. And they don't have two million visitors a year, right? So it's it's not even apples and oranges, it's, you know, apples and a basket of snakes, right?
Well, what about something like, you know, historical town, Jamestown or Charleston?
No, that's a, yeah, that's a good question. Have we ever done that sort of research?
Sure. Would you like to talk about Ocean City? I just know Becca goes there a lot.
I I do frequent, not mainly Ocean City, but some of the beaches in Delaware. And those are three dollars an hour, no matter where you're parking.
Granted, we don't have a beach, but
Right.
we we are obviously a historical gem that has a large draw.
What about Lancaster? Do you know anything about Lancaster?
I do not right offhand.
That would be interesting to see. I mean, it's a bigger municipality than us, but it is very, you know, high in terms of tourism. And they have an active farmer's market downtown and shops and things.
I do generally compare the beach to us only because a lot of people frequent the beach as well.
Right.
Many beach, but a lot of them, you know, Florida, I've been to beaches in Florida and they're forty dollars a day to park. And so places are very expensive that are tourist destinations. And then there's some that don't charge anything, but they have no meters. They have, you know, they don't have the businesses.
They may have other sources of revenue, too.
Correct, do they?
Right.
Yes.
As President Moon mentioned about Hanover, not only do they have more residents, but they also have more businesses, large box stores and things like that. I would be interested in the Lancaster rates, though, if you can track those down, please.
I don't think we need a decision on this tonight, obviously, but we we'd be happy to do that research over the next week and come back with.
And perhaps also helpful would be like a like a spreadsheet that shows us, you know, we've got twelve-hour meters that are a certain rate, we've got three-hour meters that are a certain rate. So what do those look like with incremental twenty-five cent an hour increases up to, you know, I don't know, three bucks? I mean, that's a, I think that's a pretty far-fetched cap.
Agreed.
But if we kind of saw, you know, with, you know, a quarter increase on these meters and a fifty cent increase on these meters would yield us, that might help us make a more informed decision. Unrelated, but sort of related to the general discussion. Charles, can you remind me what the what the average, what the one mil cost for assessed value for the taxpayer?
One mil will get you about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars-ish.
All right. So I think in past years, we've, for the, for the taxpayer, I'm asking like, you know, per every hundred thousand dollars in assessed value, a mil is equal to.
Without digging out my old notes of my recollection serves me, usually if you're doing a point one mil, that's a, for a homeowner whose evaluation of their single-family home is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, comes out to be about twenty-five dollars a year.
Right, okay.
Ish.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was, if I'm remembering correctly, we used two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in assessed value. We definitely want to dig into that number as we start looking at
Sure.
what I think is almost certainly going to be an increased mileage. I mean, just bulk numbers here, you know, just looking at where we're at currently at four point six seven seven zero. The expenses we need to cover to balance this budget would come out to an additional two point two one seven mils. So we're looking at almost a fifty percent increase in mileage to cover the expenses that we currently have not paid for yet. So that could be, you know, for every two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in assessed value, it might be something like sixty bucks in taxation per two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of assessed value. So those are the kind of numbers we need to keep in in mind as we hammer this out over the next couple of weeks. All right.
Okay. That brings us to our, the largest part of our general fund, and that is staff. That is always the most expensive part of any budget. So I I put together, knowing that we have two, currently two authorized officers in the police department that frankly have not found a funding source. And then over in Public Works, we we know they're hurting as far as the help and their ability to to keep up with the heavy pace of work required of them. So this is a historical view of where we were in two thousand and sixteen, through the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. You can see, in general, things have held pretty steady at at the bottom line. In two thousand and sixteen, we had thirty full-time employees. That held steady in two thousand and seventeen. We had a small increase in two thousand and eighteen, small decrease based on retirements and things of that sorts in two thousand and nineteen. Then you can see what happened in two thousand and twenty, where we reapportioned things. So from a a full-time staffing perspective, the bottom line of full-time employees has not really changed in a substantive way over the years. However, internally, based on the needs of departments, that has changed, fluctuated from time to time. You can see, we started sharing employee between Parking Department and the Public Works Department. That went away, coming out of COVID as things kind of, we had a retirement. And so we we just.
Took advantage of attrition.
Took advantage of that opportunity, right? Over in the police department, they've increased in their authorized staffing levels from eleven sworn in two thousand and sixteen to the current fourteen sworn. Not all of those positions are currently full, as we know. We had a retirement and we had resignation. So there's, they're, they're currently operating with twelve sworn, correct? Yeah. Any questions on that chart?
I'd like to discuss this with all of you, I think, whether we discuss it tonight or or in the future. I I've been thinking about this, actually, because when we increased the police officers two years ago, we increased two. Is that correct, chief? And we we filled one and then that, there was a resignation with that. And we've got the retirement earlier this year. And I look at Public Works and I I see those numbers and I think, I I think even before two thousand and sixteen, I think, I know Public Works had more employees at that point. So more than, not just nine, I think. There were a few more than that. So they've decreased over the years. And as I think about, this is my thinking as a civilian, so I'll just, you know, bear with me here. But I think about, you know, both of those departments are really important and important to the borough of Gettysburg. But I think about, in the last year or so, our Public Works Director talking to us about infrastructure issues, Chambersburg Street, which has major structural problems, concerns of sinkholes and things like that happening. And I think about the staffing. And I'm wondering whether or not we can balance the staffing with those extra positions from the police department and Public Works. Is there a way maybe to split those? When when this was passed two years ago, there wasn't a lot of discussion on those two additional positions. And as I think about this, I think about, you know, the chances of, you know, a crisis in, with law enforcement and a crisis with Public Works. And I think, well, the police department, if there were a situation of an active shooter or hostage-taking or something like that, there are opportunities for backup to our police department from Cumberland, from other municipalities, from the state police down the street. But when I think about Public Works and I think about a structural issue, like a sinkhole happening on Chambersburg Street or York Street, there's not a lot of room for backup for for Robbie and and that department. And so I just want to put this out there tonight to either have a discussion this evening or to think about discussing it in the next couple of weeks. But I'd like us to look at that, to see whether or not there could be more issues of of balance there. And so I I put that out there and I wonder what my colleagues think about that.
I'm sorry, I just put chocolate in my mouth.
It's okay, it's Halloween coming up.
That's what I eat whenever I'm budgeting, chocolate. Yeah, I I have thought about that, too, Ms. Lawson, and I would agree with you. I'm I'm concerned about the low number on our Public Works Department of staffing. Yeah. I'm also very concerned about, what is it? Is it Stevens Run that that I feel like is going to fall apart any minute now? What is that one? Is that, am I correct?
Stevens Run.
That's sorry.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That that really concerns me. And, you know, there's, when there's a natural disaster or something, then, you know, there's there's potential for FEMA money. But I don't know that that's something that we we would consider a natural disaster and could get FEMA money and support for our Public Works Department. I wouldn't, I would like to discuss that either tonight or in the future, for sure.
When I'm out and about in town, and you probably see it the same, too, you see the heavy equipment that we're voting on this evening, too. It's not unusual to see our Public Works Director up in the cab of, you know, one of those pieces of equipment, regularly operating the equipment along with staff. So I I know that they're, they are shorthanded. And just wondering, other thoughts that you might have?
I would probably need to hear from the police department and Public Works as they're the ones running and and dealing with the personnel issues on the ground, if we want to talk about it tonight.
And we may want to, because I don't think either one of them knew that I I was going to raise this. And so it may be, you might need more time on that, and that's certainly fine.
We have plenty of other things we can talk about while while people are thinking about that.
Yeah, thank you, though.
Yeah.
I would just like to, I was surprised a couple of years ago when there was as little discussion about raising the police to fourteen. And I did support that and I still want to to keep it at that level. I do talk to the chief a good bit and he does say we need that level. And so I I was, I was wondering why that happened. We we did have ARPA money at the time. But I was a little perplexed. I was pleased that we got up to fourteen. But then to take it away now, because we didn't have those discussions two years ago, seems to me a little irresponsible, because once you, you know, raise it to that level and then take it away, I think that's going to hurt morale in the police department and already having trouble with filling overtime and. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I agree with you, Mr. Berger, because I voted for it, too, two years ago. And I kind of was like flummoxed, thinking there wasn't much discussion about it. I think that we have, the fact that we're two positions down now, they haven't been filled. And the fact that we have a council that has changed a little bit, I think, I'm not uncomfortable putting that out there on the table. And again, in terms of being responsible for this budget, for the citizens of Gettysburg, and to put that discussion out there to talk about now.
So I'd like to provide a little context here. We we did approve the addition of those two officers two years ago. We did discuss at length, and we have multiple times since then, said this bill is coming due. We have not ignored that. We added these officers at the chief's behest, but also at the behest of the department as well. They, I mean, how many times has the chief said it? They're tired. And if you talk to the guys on the squad, they'll tell you the same thing. They're tired. I asked Mr. Gable to send me the police department's financials for the last eight years. And I took the full-time budget versus actual, part-time budget versus actual overtime budget versus actual less anything that's compensated by, or, you know, reimbursed. And then I looked at the total budgets. And while it is true that we have tended to be over-budget on all of those categories, full-time, part-time, overtime and total, what the number, the data I'm looking at, and I can send this to everybody, has shown us is that as we have increased staffing, the overage has shrunk every year. So the total for last year, two thousand and twenty-three, all things considered, we were actually under-budget for police staffing for the first time in in eight years. So adding full-time people will affect our part-time usage, which is pretty high. And it will affect our overtime budgets. And our overtime budgets over the last eight years have fluctuated wildly. Sometimes almost a hundred thousand dollars over-budget at the end of the year. But the trend that I'm seeing here on this spreadsheet is that over time, our overages are dropping as we budget for more officers to be on the street. That doesn't change the fact that we do have this quarter of a million-dollar shortfall right now in that in officers that we're trying to pay for. And that's a quarter of a million dollars every year forever. But we we did, we did add these jobs for cause and we did do it specifically for, as a budgetary control. If we were able to fill these positions, I think we would see that those part-time usage numbers would drop and the overtime numbers would drop. The problem here, and yes, this is an opportunity for us to look at how we're going to budget this money while we're dealing with this structural deficit, is we're struggling to fill those jobs. And it's possible we might have another open slot in four months, eight months, ten months' time. So I think it's prudent to have the conversation as to how we allocate those funds over the next three years as we deal with this structural deficit, because we do need to get to a point where the taxation, the revenues versus the expenditures, don't have a gaping hole in them every year, which we plug with, you know, money we got for Christmas from ARPA. At some point, we're going to have to just pay our bills ourselves. And previous councils struggled with this, we're going to struggle with it. Nobody wants to be the council that raises taxes, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to raise taxes here. And so it's a question of what we want to pay for and when. So if we don't think we can fill two slots on January first, it may be prudent to look at reallocating those funds with the understanding that the intent is to get back to that fourteen, you know, maybe the next year or the year after. I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying, I I think it's worth having the discussion. But the closer we can get to being a fully-staffed department at the levels that have been approved thus far, I think the better expenses, expense controls we're going to see. And even though the chief and I butt heads on money like it's our jobs, the numbers here don't lie. Each year has been closer and closer and closer and closer to budget. Each year has been closer and closer and closer and closer to budget.
And I also just think, I think two years ago when we discussed this, you're right that the ARPA funds was kind of a Christmas gift, you know? And I think we need to have a discussion again that really looks at, you know, being able to fund these positions without ARPA, because those funds are going to dry up and go away.
Yep.
And at the same time, I also want to make it clear, too, I'm not trying to pit one department in the borough against the other. I just see a big gaping hole with a need here. And so how do we balance two very important departments to, you know, in terms of the borough of Gettysburg, and how do we balance that?
So let me maybe take a different tack here, Chief. Where are we at in the civil service process? Do we think we are going to have two people either who are already certified or ready for the academy in January?
So we have four applications total. I don't know where that's going to flush out in the end. I'm not aware of a couple of people. One of the applications is a part-time officer currently working here, so obviously he's certified. So, and he's also a veteran, so if he cracks that top three, I think he's the only veteran on the list. So I think that when we hire, we're going to have to move him to full-time.
Sure.
But there's just so many variables with four candidates. Are they going to pass the physical agility? That seems to be the, one of the biggest hurdles. And they're all, from what I know, they're all excellent candidates. I've talked to all but one of them. There's a young man that lives in Hanover that I've talked to just a multitude of times, and he's just a very pleasant young man to talk to. Need to go to the academy. There's a young man that, I don't know where he's from, he is, he's from around locally, but he's in, been in and riding a couple of times. Seems like a very pleasant young man. I don't know if, there was a young lady, I believe she was from Hanover as well, I don't know if she ended up turning in her application. So I don't know the names of these folks. You know, I would also like to point out with the 14, and I appreciate you doing that work, Mr. Moon, to show, as you said, you and I butt heads all the time over numbers, and then, you know, I try to tell Matt I'm doing everything I can. I would point out that I haven't had a full 14 yet to show you what we can do with those overtime numbers. And I do try my darndest to supplement our patrols with, I know I often hear comment about, well, there's more than two people out. That's probably 90% of the time because, and I talked about it last week, it's because Barb Zortman has sent us some more money that somebody else didn't spend, and we get to use it. So, you know, we do our darndest, and I will also, I will also just point out that that part-time police officers are getting really close to being a thing of the past. You know, we, our part-time availability is down, and, you know, I honestly don't see, unless there's a real turn societally, it's even a word, that, of that changing, because when I checked before we started our process with Hack and their police academy, how many unaffiliated folks they had available, it was one.
Right.
So those people aren't going to say, okay, we want to come to Gettysburg or anywhere for that matter and work part-time. They're going to get scooped up and go somewhere full-time. So I, you know, I'll tell everybody now, and, you know, I'll back it up later, my magic number when I came here, when you run all the staffing formulas and things like that, look at the visitors coming, and the magic number that I have in the back of my head and what I came up with, the third or fourth day I was here is 16. I know that that's not sustainable. It's not sustainable as the borough. I think we can make it work with 14. If we go below that, we're not going to lower overtime.
Right.
And so, I mean, without...
So would you say it's fair in your assessment, we maybe have one ACT 120 certified applicant that we could be ready to go with in January, but...
Yes.
Beyond that, we're looking at academy?
Looking at academy, which means June, July.
So we're looking at at least June or July.
But we'd have to, if we're sending them to the academy, then they're going to be put on, so there's going to be a reduced salary for that first. And the academy salary is circa 60 grand, Charles, correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yeah, that's about right. So when we come back and revisit this next week, now hearing, it's very unlikely we're going to have two full-time people in January, we can take one of those salaries, essentially cut it in half from a budgetary perspective for 2025, which will help us get to where we need to get.
So that's what I would advocate.
Assuming you want to stay with the 14.
I would advocate that with the express statement that the goal is to get to 14, but I just don't know that we're there on this budget at this moment. And not just for budgetary reasons, because the civil service process is difficult to navigate right now, and we have struggled to fill those jobs.
Include, even though we did help with the last officer in terms of going through the police academy, I mean, there was financial commitment on the part of the borough.
There is, and then there's also, there was reimbursement from the state as well.
Reimbursement from the state.
So we can look at those specific numbers when we get into 410 or the expenditure side.
Okay.
Same with over in public works in 430.
And so, yeah, I mean, it looks, it looks like if we were to reallocate half of the expense of the second officer for the year, it would cover much of a DPW employee, but there would still be a slight millage left over. So I think it's a responsible conversation to have. Where's everybody else landing on that?
I have a question. What are you going to do if you take the new DPW employee with half? Where are you going to come up with the other half when you fill the police officer's position?
So it would be half of the year, the position wouldn't be filled because they'd be at the academy. We wouldn't be actually starting to pay them at full until they started their field training, which would be halfway through the calendar year.
I understand that, but how are you going, how are you going to supplement if you get a person in DPW? Where's money going to come after the police office?
Taxes.
And another thing, I would just like to bring this up, which he never says. One of the problems we have with recruiting, and you need to explain this, and this is drawing people, is about what our surrounding municipalities pay their starting salaries. Do you want to explain which one? Pick one. Littlestown?
Yeah.
Not to say, not to say that we need more money, but you just need to hear this explanation.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think if we go back to, if you were looking when I was talking about, and we discussed earlier raising the part-time salary, also in the, in the materials that were provided with the full-time salaries across the board for Adams County for full-time police departments. And we are, we are absolutely the lowest, we used to be second to the lowest to Eastern Adams Regional, but we're now, you know, Littlestown, Conawago Township are probably close to, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, so this is a guess, but at least 10 grand over what we're doing with comparable benefits. Cumberland Township around 5 grand with comparable benefits, Eastern Adams Regional, $3,000 to $4,000 with comparable benefits. So, you know, we're definitely the end. And if you go outside the county, if you go up to York County, I mean, for a half-hour drive, officers can make 20, $20,000 a year more.
Sure.
Which is, it's, it's, it's difficult from a recruiting perspective. And, you know, I, we sell it by, we have, we have a good group, we have good morale now, we have an awesome area. I mean, we're Gettysburg. So, you know, but that, that doesn't buy groceries, is the bottom line. And I understand what everybody's saying about, and I understand that...
I mean, at $10,000 an officer, I mean, that's $140,000, that's a whole officer, right? So those pay rates, of course, are set through the collective bargaining agreement, so we're not going to be addressing any of those in this budget.
No, no.
It was just a topic that I wanted people to hear, because one of the things in bringing diversity in, is Donald Bull, the salary. I just claim, I'm not asking for more money, I know about the collective bargaining agreement, but I think this is something. I just think it's something that everyone needs to be aware of.
Yep.
Because it's very difficult recruiting people. I go on recruiting trips.
Yep.
But it's difficult. And as I said, Patty, I want you to see that clip I'm going to send you, that kind of addresses this issue.
That's why I, thank you, Mayor. That's why I think Mr. Berger's suggestion tonight is one that we should take seriously, because we are a municipality where the residents pay the highest taxes around in Adams County. We have many nonprofit, well, many, some large nonprofits that limit development in the borough, including the National Park Service, the college, the hospital. Yet we are the county seat, we have tourists come, we have services that have to be provided, both law enforcement and also public works. And so that's why I think it will behoove us to kind of have a real conversation where we look at numbers and we talk about this, because it's, it's not going to get easy. And I think in the past, when we haven't raised taxes, even incrementally, I think we pay for that.
Yep.
You know? So I appreciate you talking about this this evening, and I look forward to continued conversations about this. Thanks.
Yep. All right, let's go back to Charles.
Yeah, so on the agenda, you'll see that I have every fund listed by every department in that fund, both expenditures and revenues. So the intention here is to go through each of these categories over the next three weeks, and you can drill down on the specifics of funding levels, of staffing levels, and of the sort as we go through this. It was my suggestion to start with the general fund. In past years, we dealt with the smaller funds first and kind of checked those boxes and dealt with the big enchilada at the end. The reason I thought we'd mix it up a little bit is I knew there were some questions about the staffing levels and that we're actually, have a request to increase staffing this year in public works. And the general fund's also related to the capital projects fund.
Right.
So, you know, what happens in the general fund may affect what happens over in Fund 18 with capital projects. So, and then, of course, we do have the ARPA funds that we need to figure out what, how much of that we're going to use in 2025. So we could just start at the top here, or we could just bounce around. What's your preference, Mr. President?
Let's start at the top.
Okay. All right, in your folders tonight, you'll see I have the detail of each line item. The first one is Department 400, which is you. These are your stipends that have been allocated for 2025 and associated payroll taxes. Is there anyone that has questions or suggested alterations in this department? See, it talks to about each of your laptops, the costs for supporting those, talks about conferences for the mayor, and also you folks are welcome to go to conferences as well. Those are the estimated costs for those. We do, should talk about Object 460 continuing ed because we do have a new subsection here about sister cities spending.
Hmm.
Can have that conversation at, now, or you'll see Seki Gahara is listed in other departments as well, so we can talk about that later or talk about that now.
Just start diving in. Let's go.
Okay, so I foreshadowed this last week. As we know, we have a very vigorous sister city in Japan, Seki Gahara. They are very fond of us, and as I had the opportunity to travel to visit them in 2016, I'm fond of them as well. In fact, Chris Quinn, the National Park Service, is currently in Seki Gahara right now, building those relationships. They have a sister city with us, a sister park with the park service. They are requesting our presence in 2025, a year from now, October of 2025, to commemorate the 10-year anniversary of the opening of their visitor's center, of which they consulted with us in a fairly dramatic fashion in 2016 for the development, or 24, 15, 16, for the development of that amenity that they have in Seki Gahara. They tend to help fund our travel there, but I don't know that that's necessarily fair for, to ask them for that sole burden. So I did put a nominal amount of money in this line item for a representative of the council or the mayor to attend that ceremony in 2025, and you'll also see this over in the office of the manager.
So as this will come up in a few different line items as we go through the budget, thoughts, feelings, reactions to the idea that we should or could make an investment in the relationship we have with our sister cities?
Ms. Butterfield's looking at me very inquisitively. Judy, would you be able to speak to how these things have been funded in the past, and that that may not be the easiest way to do this moving forward?
Well, the College Department of Oriental Studies has helped in the past. I believe it's really important, I believe we need to have representatives attend. The cultural differences of, you all have heard the phrase, losing face is important to our Oriental friends, and I think that we should make every effort to make sure we had representatives there for their celebration.
Judy, was it the East Asian Studies Department at the college, or do you know? That helped, and were they financially helpful?
I'd have to look back of the degree of their help, whether it was just encouragement or financial, I don't recall.
Okay.
But all of our Seki Gahara meetings, the college has sent their representative from that department, and she's taken active participation in it. I just think, even more so than our other sister cities, this one, it's important that we send representatives.
I, I'll go out on a limb here and just say, I think, given the hard discussion we're going to have the next few weeks, and choices we have to make, and we're looking at, you know, tax increases, I wonder if this would be a good project that could benefit from privatization rather than taxpayer dollars. How we get there, I don't know. I'm just, you know, putting that out there now, whether there might be opportunities...
I have an idea on that, but I haven't had a chance to investigate it. I don't know if I, well, I'll throw it out there now, because if this is something that is of interest to the community at large, there may be a privatization aspect that we could do.
And I'm not against it from a cultural exchange at all.
No, no, I, yeah.
I'm just thinking that tough decisions we're going to have to make regarding, you know, taxes and revenue and expenses, and, yeah.
Yeah, so back in August, I had the opportunity to speak to the Women's Club at Lake Heritage, and they specifically wanted a presentation on sister cities for Gettysburg Borough. And so I mentioned how our relationship with Seki Gahara is above and beyond all the other sister cities that we have. And I know the other active one is Leon, but that's largely run through the college. I suggested, and it was fairly well-received from the Women's Club, an opportunity to create a vacation package that would be sold to members of the community at large. And the reason I thought of that was Seki Gahara would like a full delegation of people to go and enjoy Seki Gahara and Japan at large. I just not have, I did not have the opportunity to engage a travel agency on how something like that would be put together, but it's a concept that's been floating, and the ladies there have contacted me recently to talk more about that.
Okay. Because there are, I mean, that's true in education, a lot of times, you know, educators... educators, secondary school educators will travel with accompanying students overseas and their expenses are paid for by the, so that's probably what you're referring to, right?
Something like that.
And how many, just for the public's, um, knowledge, besides, um, Leon, Nicaragua, there's also South Dakota, right? Gettysburg, South.
Gettysburg, South Dakota.
South Dakota. How many other sister cities are there?
Uh, St. Maryglies, France.
Okay.
And, uh, something in Mexico. I'd have to look.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yep.
Yes, I got a thank you note from Rika, who's the head of their prefecture there. And I shared it with Charles and she did ask that someone come. She invited me to come visit on this trip. It's a very nice note and I wrote her back, but I kind of left it open as to if we would go because Patty, I agree with you. I just kind of said, thank you for the invitation. We'll look into it because if we're going to raise people's taxes, at this, I don't think it kind of, it's, it's the optics. So I think we need to come up with a different way or source of funding. I don't know if anybody's going to agree with me. I have to have a new roof put on or I'll pay my own way, but, yeah.
Charles, what is the total price tag you have set aside for a potential visit?
So the, the sister, $2,000 would, would probably cover economy, airfare, round trip.
And that's, but across the different budget categories, do you have other funds spread out too?
Probably about 5,000 because there would be airfare over in the other department and then some gifts.
Right.
Is there a university there in that city?
No.
No? I was thinking, cause housing can sometimes you can find.
They actually don't even have a hotel there.
They what?
They don't have a hotel in Seki Gahara. You have to go to Gifu, city of Gifu.
Okay. Thanks.
So I think the responsible thing here would be to take these funds off the budget and, but that's not to say this isn't worth our time and effort to pursue. Um, and I, I, I can't guarantee anything, but I think we could find, um, people in the community who are invested in this sense of diplomacy, who might be interested in helping with a project like this. So let's keep it on a back burner, but let's pursue non-public funding if we can.
And the Japanese embassy in Washington became active last time. And it could be that they could be approached to help funding this. We need to explore their level of interest this visit, this time.
Yep. Okay.
Matt, I agree with you.
Great.
And Patty.
Okay. Uh, so is there anything else here in?
Oh, wait, there's one other thing too. The next anniversary is Sakihara, Gettysburg, and Waterloo.
Yep.
On the council salaries, I don't, I may, I may have missed an email. I have not, nor will I accept a council salary. So you can put that as zero. I'll sign that paper if I've missed it in an email. I know it's only $2,500, but I don't want it.
Okay. I'll make that adjustment for the next round of look.
Okay. Anything else on this department? Anyone? All right. Let's move on.
Office manager, these are, uh, salaries for myself, Tammy Mordor for our finance assistant, Bureau Secretary Sarah Stahl.
Run 401?
401, yes.
Thank you.
I have a question for that one. When you get there.
I'm sorry?
If you're ready, I have a question. I was just sharing that with you.
Yeah. Um, two of those salaries are cost share between the borough and Stormwater Authority. Uh, myself and Tammy Mordor, um, allocate some of our daily tasks to the Stormwater Authority. So they pay a percentage of our salaries. So for me, um, Stormwater pays 4% of my salary and for Tammy, um, the Stormwater pays 20% of her salary. Uh, you'll also see things like the costs of our telephones, uh, our costs for the department for internet service or laptop computers, um, continuing education. Um, Seki Gahara is not listed here. So that, that will show up in probably 409 then. Um, questions?
I have one. Um, right now, the HR department, is that included under this?
Yes. Yeah. So Marie's salary is in here.
And right now it is one person deep or two people deep right now. At the time of the adoption of this budget, it will be one person?
Right.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, Kara will, uh, leave employment at the end of the year.
End of the year.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any issues in 401? All right. Let's move on. Next would be 403.
Yep. Tax collection, uh, status quo from previous years. Uh, this is for Lisa Angstad, uh, the, fees and operating supplies that she uses for her businesses are tax collector.
Any questions? All right.
All right. 409. Uh, our operating supplies, postage, uh, we usually purchase some things. Sir, do, how low are we on our supplies for merchandise? Do you have an idea?
We are getting low on some items. So we'll have to place an order before the end of the year.
Okay. So, uh, you see here I added, uh, under Object 217, sister city gifts of 1250. So we'll cut that.
Oh, I was going to say I would.
That's the one you want to keep?
I, I'd keep it because if we can get privatization to cover the travel costs for a delegation to go, but I think just in terms of bringing gifts, that's very much with the culture, the Japanese culture. I think we'd need to be able to provide like a flag or something that you'd, you know, there, that's a, that's important. So I would suggest keeping that 1250 in there. I think is what you have.
Yep.
Just.
Anyone else?
We have, uh, some community members that have, uh, contacted us and me in particular about the planning commission having televised meetings. How much would that cost? They're paying for it themselves. We're going through that really important process of zoning updates and I would just like to bring that up for discussion to see what other people would say about it.
Yeah. You can see, uh, so member Berger's talking about Object 218, public relations.
Uh, A. Can we hold off for a second? Can we?
Sure.
Let's finish Patty's question about keeping the sister city gifts in or out, and then we'll move on to that, please.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anybody else have a strong opinion on keeping the gifts in for our sister city? In? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So, sorry for the interruption.
No, no.
Please go on, Chris.
So, yeah, I, um, you can see under 218A, uh, we, we have 12 business meetings at 270 each comes to $3,240. We have 11 work sessions because we don't have a work session in December. Uh, that's again at 270 each. Uh, we usually have a couple special meetings a year, um, you know, for CDBG, public hearings, those types of things. So I added an additional five, uh, then the two newsletters and the PEG channel. So if we were to broadcast 12 pub planning commission meetings, it would add $3,240, um, to the budget. Now remember, we also have 10 authorities, boards and commissions. So.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, an argument could be made that Harb is as high profile as planning commission.
I was going to actually mention that.
So, I mean, you know, it.
Right. And then I think too, uh, there's a, there's a, you know, a sentiment right now that these planning commission meetings specifically should be televised while they go through the process of reviewing the zoning ordinance revisions. Um, and while I understand the value of that, and we didn't budget for it this year, so we opted not to do that. Um, it's hard to budget for it for next year because they could wrap it in January or they could wrap in June. We really don't have a sense of when that's going to happen. And I do, I do think there's a, a question of prioritization there. We have 10 ABCs. Should we, should we budget 120 meetings next year? Should they all be televised at $270 apiece? Or is it just this one that people are upset about? Um, again, these are all public meetings. Anyone can attend. Um, I, it's an important question. Um, I just, I don't, I think it's hard to budget for it because, yeah, I mean, it could be an extra three grand next year or it could be $270. We don't know. Thoughts?
Well, I think the meetings that are, you know, like planning or Harb, they're often covered by the local press as well. So not only are they public meetings, but they do get press coverage. So just throw that out there.
While I, while I agree that they, um, are a hot topic right now and, and if we could afford, you know, but to, to, um, to record them and publish, you know, and, and air them, um, then certainly. Uh, but as we are having to have tough discussions about, you know, uh, making cuts so that we can hopefully have a balanced budget very soon in the next three weeks because I really don't want to be here on election night. Um, I will say during 2020, I, uh, created and, and YouTube'd public, uh, videos for entertainment pleasure, um, for the theater that I work for. I hope we never have to go back to Zoom Theater ever again, but it is quite possible that anyone from the public can, if they would like, come with their cell phone camera or iPad, record the meeting, put a Facebook Live up. But you can also record the meeting. You can create a YouTube account. It, it's free. You put it on, put the video on there and put the link out there, open to the public link and people can see it. I just think that there's, you know, if there's a really concern out there, I, I hear you and I, I, I wish that we could afford that, but we're going to be having some tough discussions about staffing and equipment. And at the end of the day, the big elephant in the room is a lot of that ARPA money is going to be gone. And how are we going to continue on after, what is it, 2026?
Right.
27? You know, we, we've got to have, we're going to have to be raising taxes a little bit each year to get there. And I hope that we get there, but I just, I just think there's other ways for that to happen. But I do, I, I do understand that they're concerned and I appreciate that. Um, but please come to the meeting. Somebody, somebody out there, please bring an iPad, record it and then post it on YouTube and all over social media.
I think Chad answered their question. They just want to make sure there's some kind of recording or memorandum of what happened at the meeting.
Perfectly legal for them to be right there with a cell phone or an iPad and recording this very meeting.
Any meeting. Where's my phone? Here.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I would, I would not be inclined to, uh, budget for that just because I think it's unbudgetable. Um, because we don't know how many people would have the interest in. So, anyone else have an opinion there?
I'd, I would be against it with this, with the deficit issues we have to address.
Okay. All right. Okay. I, I do appreciate you bringing that up though. And you were right to do it. I mean, people had brought it up six months ago and thank you for remembering it. All right. Um, so that was page one of 409. I think we'll finish 409 here. Being cognizant of the time, we'll call it a night after that. Um, and we'll, um, be prepared to dive in on 410 next week. So let's, um, Charles, if you wouldn't mind just kind of helping us click through this one and make sure we know everything.
Um, our, our relationship with Cozen O'Connor, uh, spoke, I foreshadowed this last week. I, I think they're beginning to bear the fruit that we had hoped.
Yep.
We, we did not give it a full year yet, so I, I would be reticent to remove it. Um, but you can see their cost. This is a cost share between GMA, the borough and the Stormwater Authority. Uh, the borough's share of that is, is 3,000, uh, 36,000 for the full year. Um, you can see the specific things that we'll be working on with Cozen and our, uh, our other consultant, uh, Michael Baker, uh, with, uh, our various big projects. Uh, and we're going to, um, reapply for several grants, uh, most notably the raise, our fifth round of raise, um, for construction money on Baltimore Street.
So would I be correct in saying that that $36,000 cost would be contingent upon our partners continuing to pay what they are currently?
That is correct. And so, um, the Stormwater Authority has authorized the, the continuation of their, of their arrangement.
Okay. So we're, we would just need to talk to GMA about that?
Right.
Okay.
And GMA's in for, Chris, a thousand a month, I believe it was.
Right.
And so for, just for folks may be watching us at home, the, the concept there is that the three organizations are pooling their resources and all going for the same funding sources for the same projects so that there is not competition when we submit grants.
Yeah.
Because the, the folks that award the grants do not like to see competition within the same municipality.
Right. And it only helps us when we're bundling this work with Stormwater or with the municipal authorities so that, you know, we're doing their work and then putting our work on top of it. And it's a cost savings for everybody.
Yeah, quite, quite, uh, quite the opposite. You know, they, they, they certainly don't like to see, uh, organizations in competition within the same municipality.
Right.
For, for grants, but they actually love it when they are collaborating together for the greater good. Um, and so it behooves us, uh, for sure. The grant panel review boards love it when they see, um, organizations working together on a grant. Um, and, and yes, I, I, I would like to see this stay because it does take, uh, a while, uh, a firm like this to, to really see the fruits of our seeds that we're planting in there. Um, and I do know that there's been some, some good work done on the grant writing and also some, some, um, some connections and, and with some politicians, um, that we weren't able to get, um, some action from, and now we are. So that's, that's good.
Yep. Um, object 321 and 324, I, um, did not mention this. These, so these are telephone costs. Uh, I put those over in, in previous budgets. They were for me and Sarah essentially, uh, landlines and our wireless, uh, phones. Those are now budgeted over in the office of the manager. So the decrease here was offset by an increase over, uh, in Department 401.
Okay.
We are employing our new government-wide, uh, enterprise system. Uh, we're getting trained on that this week. Uh, I'm laughing, looking at Sarah because we have not told our vendor that yet. Um, but it's out there now. So.
Did I watch these? Sorry.
So that's, that's the, the cost for the enterprise software under object 329. Um, we have our quotes from our Hockley and O'Donnell, uh, for our insurances budgeted in 409. Stormwater fees. Yes, we pay our own stormwater fees. Uh, our vendors in 373, uh, for carpet cleaning, pest control, some miscellaneous objects. Uh, same down there in 374. Um, making sure our alarm system works well, making sure our sprinklers work well, make sure the elevator's not going to come crashing down on us, those types of things. Um, knock on wood. We don't expect to pay any damages or judgments next year. Uh, subscriptions for various professional organizations in line item 420. Our IT folks over at Traceus for supporting, um, our computer systems and other IT needs. Their bill will be apportioned out by department. So you'll see this repeated in multiple departments for the cost share. So you'll see this repeated in multiple departments for the cost share for those departments.
So when we call Tracetus, one of us is having a problem. They're on retainer then, and we're not getting charged for every.
We pay for, we pay for the support.
Okay, thank you.
So do not worry about calling them for help when you need to because we're paying for that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go back real quick to, oh, I just had it. 409-329, computer software fees? I, no, yes. I hate to nitpick over $200. How much are you using Zoom? And I do know, I do believe I saw earlier in Microsoft 365 that we have Teams is.
So I would like to speak to that. We have consultations with people remotely with some frequency. And we have tried both services, and Teams is free for a reason.
Yep.
It is not awesome.
Yeah.
The video conferencing on it is, I'm trying to be respectful here, ungood. So I think that $200 is well spent.
Highly technical term.
Yes.
And our meetings that we are on Zoom for are more than 40 minutes.
Some of them are, yes.
Thank you. Like I said, I hate to nitpick over $200.
No, it's what we're here for, so go for it.
And yeah, I've had the same experience with Teams, but I thought I'd ask.
Don't, don't print that, Richard. Don't, don't, don't get Microsoft coming after me, okay? All right, so we are on 452, which is IT expenses. And then 460, we have some continuing education.
Here you'll see the sister cities, which I will pull away.
We'll pull that away. So that HRC training is ongoing mediation training for the members of our Human Relations Commission, which is central to their mission by ordinance. And I think that's the end. Anybody have any questions about Fund 409? Okay. So I think we'll wrap there for the night on the budget.
Unless you want to.
I'm sorry.
Tick off some of the really small ones since it's not too terribly late.
What were you going to say, Peter?
I know we didn't get to it tonight, but for the 20% increase with the healthcare, have we been able to go to them and say, you know, can we shop around or we're going to shop around if this is what you're going to kind of push?
If we shop around, it'll go up more than 20%. We are in a consortium.
They know that?
Oh, yeah. We are in PIMIC, which is the Pennsylvania Health Municipal Health and Municipal, Pennsylvania Municipal Health Insurance Cooperative, PIMIC. We are pulled with many other municipalities across the Commonwealth, and so we get really good rates. I know 20% doesn't sound like a good rate, but that's why we were able to enjoy 6% as opposed to the 20s for several years. Our experience, we've had some staff members who've had some catastrophic illnesses recently, which is accounting for their, our 19.9 this year.
And that organization, PIMIC, they actually negotiate for those municipalities, correct? Yeah.
There's like, GMA's in PIMIC as well.
Right, right. I remember when we switched to them and how it was quite a bit of a savings, actually.
And we won't, we won't receive a refund this year because our experience is too high, but in low usage years, we usually get a good rebate check, if you will, because we've paid far more than we are using. And so if you, if you look at our year-to-date numbers, at the, I provide that report every business meeting, the bottom, last line item under revenue is refund of prior year's expense. That shows you what we received back in 2024 for previous years. And we would not get that if we went out on our own.
Thank you.
All right. So in spite of the manager's protestations, those of us who are school-aged children are probably all itching to call it a night, so we're going to do that. You all have a sense of how this is going to go for the next two weeks. We're going to go department by department. We're going to go line by line, looking at these expenses. This is the correct thing that we've done tonight. If you have questions, let's talk about it. We're going to start with 410 next week, which is the police services. This is the, as Charles likes to say, the big bite of the apple here. The Police Department is our largest expense generator because they provide a 24-hour-a-day service, so we are going to have to talk about that. But we do have a big question before us, which I think we had a thoughtful conversation tonight about, which is the funding of these positions and how we want to, whether we want to push forward with funding to full-time officers or whether we want to sort of massage where those funds fall next year. So I want you all to think about that very intentionally for next week, and I hope we can have a zesty and robust discussion about that.
May I also add that the Police Department budget is the largest in almost every municipality? So it's not just us.
That's absolutely correct.
I think people overlook that.
That's absolutely correct.
So real quick, just because I'm a nerd for numbers tonight, Mr. Bales, to Mr. Bales' point, I just looked up, we received refunds of $82,000 for 2024. That will not be the case next year, but, but if we were on our own, we would not be receiving money back for premium spend.
Okay. All right, everybody, I'm going to go back to public comment. Any public comment? Okay. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned for the evening.